Everybody's attention. If I get everybody's attention, we'll get started here. Appreciate your patience. We had a long work session. We can get everybody to take a seat. I want to welcome everybody tonight. If you'll all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocations, there will be two, both given by Pastor William Parsons of Redeemer Lutheran Church.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell. Given what has happened recently in our land and also in our community, I'd like to pray first for peace and then for our council and government here in Fairhope. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost, amen. Almighty God, the ruler of all things and all men, you hold the universe in your palm, and you have set all things to move in harmony. You desire that all men dwell in unity and love. We confess that we have spoiled the creation by our sin and that we have disrupted the harmony by rebellion, and we have divided our nations by selfishness. We trust that you will permit, will not permit, sin to rule the day, that you can bring order out of this confusion, and that you will make nations instruments of your will. We implore that you would crush men's lusts for illicit power, that you would stir in men respect for your creation, kindle in them love for your creatures. And to this end, we pray, raise up leaders everywhere who will do your will, make the nations obedient servants to your purpose, and teach men to live in service to one another, and grant tranquility that peace which the world cannot understand may be preached to the nations, in the name of your Son, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
And then, secondly, I'd like to pray for the administrators of this city and those who lead us here in Fairhope. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, guardian and keeper of your people, watch over those who are entrusted with the government of Fairhope, Alabama. Make them pure and honest, keep them from temptation and bribery, from favoritism or prejudice, from indolence or neglect of duty, create in them an earnest desire to serve faithfully, attend their efforts, that their work may not suffer from mediocrity, permit them to experience the joys of noble service completed for a grateful people, encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who help to serve. Use every willing service and every effort put forth for good government. Bless the rule of your people here in Fairhope, Alabama, that your will may be accomplished among them. Promote all things that are good for the kingdom of your Son, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, for all.
Counsel, before we get to approving the minutes, I would like to ask you to amend the agenda. I would ask that you amend it by voting to remove item five, which is the final adoption of an ordinance to transfer an acre of land, which actually was a sale of an acre of land to the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation, also at the request of the mayor. The mayor requests to pull item 27 regarding the grant that Ms. Botop spoke about in the work session. And then, thirdly, clerk has given you a resolution for the purchase of a mud pump, a Vermeer mud pump, so at a purchase price of $12,679. I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to remove the said items five and 27 and add as item, it'll be after the application of the beer wine off premises license, I'm going to call it 32, the resolution to purchase the mud pump.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to remove the two items from the agenda and also to add the resolution for the purchase of the mud pump. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all is in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the agenda has been amended. Folks, for those of you, I know that many of you may be here for agenda item five. If you are here for that, that was pulled. This is not something that we are considering at a later date. I understand this to be a dead issue. I understand this to be pulled by the requestor. They no longer have an interest in purchasing that approximately an acre of land. So if you're here for that, it will not be on the agenda. You will be allowed to speak about it if you would like to at the end of the meeting, since it's not an agenda item now. You can speak to that item at the end of tonight's meeting under general comments. But this is no longer an agenda item. We will not be voting on it now, and I can't foretell the future, but they, the Fairhope Single Tax, it was at their request that this was pulled from the agenda. And I consider this a dead issue. So if anybody wants to take the time to go back home, and sorry you came out, I believe, the mayor, I believe he may have sent a Facebook message out. I sent a Facebook message out to try to communicate that it would not be on the agenda. So if you came out for this and you waited, I sincerely apologize.
Can I go too?
Pardon?
Can I go too?
Yes, Mr. Robinson, you cannot leave. Counsel, you have been given the minutes of the January 22 regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings. Do you have any changes, additions, deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, those minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. I was heartbroken today to hear about the death of Reese Johnson, a Fairhope High School senior. The hardest thing a parent can face is the loss of a child. We hold his family and their friends of this precious and talented young man in our hearts It's been a very emotional week. Robert Rome, he's been with the city for 35 years, retired on February 9. I think this is really cool. The employees held a retirement party for him last Friday at the Fireman's Hall down the pier. Family and close friends also came to celebrate. When Robert started working with the city, he had a plan to retire after 35 years, and he did exactly that on the same date he first started with the city. I want to wish Robert all the best in his retirement.
On the agenda tonight, there is a merit increase adjustment on tonight's agenda. The city has always budgeted money for both a merit increase, and the merit increase is usually individualized for the employees. And basically, what we did for this 2018 budget is just put a bucket of funds for merit increase and eliminated the cost of living raise so that we're rewarding those who are doing exceptionally well and so forth. This has been discussed at both the 2017 proposed budget and the 2018 proposed budget. I presented the slide, if Jeff, you can put the slide up, which was part of my presentation and also printed in the budget books for council, and showed basically what has happened since 2014. A total merit, and we had the cost of living raise in 2014, and the merit increases, which totaled 4 percent, 4 percent increase. 2015, we had the cost of living raise and the merit increases that totaled 3 percent. 2016, you can see the cost of living merit, 4 percent. In 2017, there was just the cost of living raise, again, 2 percent across the board. In the 2018 budget, I proposed to do a merit increase, a bucket for merit increase. That is now on the agenda without any communication with me, and it's taking, keep in mind that merit was not included in this, in the 2018 proposed budget. So now, taking that, we can read the resolution when we get to it. It's not what I proposed. There was no conversation or engagement on this to make the right decision, I believe, that would be the right for our city employees. Even though I would prefer 100 percent of the increases being merit-based, I do appreciate council's understanding that rewarding job performance has a positive effect on workforce overall. We will show you that our staff can handle this and make it work, and we'll be back next year with the original program, because I know that this would be best for the city. The City of Fairhope will celebrate Arbor Day this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. on the campus of the Coastal Alabama Community College Faulkner Campus. So meet us at the big tent on the campus, and we will be celebrating the distinction of our city, which is the Tree City USA. We will also recognize beautification award recipients as well as the fifth grade poster contest winners. We will also be giving away hundreds of tree seedlings. In addition, there will be a fruit tree raffle. So please join us Saturday. I want to thank the Eastern Shore Art Center's Nancy Raya, I'm not sure if she's here, and the Fairhope High School teachers and students who participated in helping, you can look at some of these pictures, us create a stormwater medallion. The students learned the importance of keeping our drains clean. We kind of learned that tonight, too, in work session. Thanks to the Stormwater Education Program, which was conducted by Weeks Bay Foundation as part of the contribution from the City of Fairhope. I'd like to address, let's see, well, we did talk about that in work session, so I'm skipping a big part of this. There was another item requested tonight that would be removed from the agenda, and that, two council members requested a vote on a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Arts and Crafts Festival Foundation that would be entered into for a three-year period beginning this year. This would eliminate the ability for the historical stakeholders to be included. The Fairhope Arts and Crafts Festival has been essential to our city since its inception by the merchants downtown 66 years ago. In fact, it was the downtown businesses that started this festival in their storefronts. That's where they featured local artists, and it wasn't a street event at that point. For the first time this year, we are all working together to make this year the very best it can be. The partners at the table for input and collaboration are our valuable merchants downtown, the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce, the Eastern Shore Art Center, and the City of Fairhope, all supported by a generous group of volunteers that created this foundation maybe a few years ago. These are all important stakeholders, and although an owner of the event has never been written in a formal agreement in the past, it is not the time to suddenly define the owner by a council vote tonight for the next three years. It's clear the event takes more than just one organization to be a success, and it is my wish to keep all stakeholders involved in this process so we continue to make it better and better. This item should absolutely be pulled from the agenda tonight, and thoughtful plans with communication should be made that include everyone concerned. I want to thank the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation for reconsidering the Tatumville development, and thanks to the over 2,200 citizens who spoke up about their concerns. This was the right decision for our city. Again, please keep Reese, his family, and friends in your thoughts and prayers. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Okay, next item is public participation. This pertains to agenda items only. Remember, items five and 27 have been removed. If you'd like to speak to five at the end of the meeting, you will be allowed the opportunity or anything else for that matter. So I will now open the floor for public participation on agenda items. Be given three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Manelis. I reside at 104 White Avenue in Fairhope. Council President Burrell, council members, and Mayor Wilson. This is in reference to item 17 on the agenda and the city's broader plan in that regard. Each of you are aware that this past weekend, Fairhope Utilities experienced a sewage spill of up to 200,000 gallons, wherein raw sewage was spilled into Tatumville Gully and ultimately entered Mobile Bay just south of the American Legion. This past August, Fairhope Utilities spilled 260,000 gallons of raw sewage into Fly Creek, which ultimately made its way into Mobile Bay. The incident this past August was caused by a blown fuse and the failure of the SCADA system to report due to the system being on the same electrical power serviced by the blown fuse. This was a preventable accident. The root cause of this past weekend's spill is an aging, failing sewer collection system that has been compromised, allowing stormwater runoff to migrate into the sewer collection system, causing overcapacity and the resulting spillage. So here are some of the facts. Fairhope has an average rainfall of 68 inches per year. We're one of the highest rainfall places in the United States. As you know, Baldwin County is the fastest-growing county in the state of Alabama. In the last 10 years, the City of Fairhope has experienced about a 20 percent growth in its population. And this is an important point to underscore for those that may not be completely familiar. Sewer's collection, transmission, and treatment should be a closed system, and by that I mean, and by definition, rainwater, stormwater collection, and transmission should be completely segregated and separate from the sewage system. Baldwin County regulations require that our sewer system be capable of handling a worst-case scenario, which they define as a 100-year, 24-hour rain event. We experience hurricanes and experiences like we had last weekend where we had roughly seven inches of rain. By regulation, we, our system, should be capable of handling that. In August of this past year, the City of Fairhope commissioned the firm of Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to study our gas, water, and sewer utilities. In that, they say it is highly probable that the pipe, that the sewage system is partially maintained, referring to the city, the clay pipe, is allowing groundwater and stormwater to enter the system as well as allowing sewage to escape the collection system. They further state that as the system continues to be strained, these overflows will increase a number of locations and the amount of sewage escaping, as was occurred this past. I'm about to finish you off, Councilman Burrell, so if you'll bear with me. So my appeal to you, the council and the mayor, is this. Mayor Wilson, you are to be commended for the attention that you have brought this past year to the problems that Fairhope faces due to the demands of growth and what this has placed on our aging and inadequate infrastructure. Fairhope City Council, led by President Burrell, is to be commended for exercising fiscal discipline and responsibility in your actions. Blame gets us nowhere in addressing the problems at hand, nor does a backward look. No one up here on this council dais is responsible for where the city finds itself with the current infrastructure problem. This was years in the making, folks, and it would have required years of planning and funding. The sewage study cited in here recommends a couple things. The two most important things are it states that it'll take about $19 million to repair roughly 60 miles of this clay pipe. Now, they recommend doing this over a 10-year period, replacing six miles per year. They also recommend upgrades to the lift systems to the tune of about $6 million. So my question and challenge to each of you tonight, is the timeline of 10 years to fix this acceptable to you? Can't this be accelerated? Have you considered funding upgrades through things like issuance of municipal bonds or another funding mechanism? Also, and it was discussed during the work session today, it cites in this report that the city should have a city-generated sewer, I'm sorry, sewer system master plan that you plan off of, which cites upgrades and repairs, prioritizes those upgrades and repairs, and then comes to the city council for funding. In the past six months, Fairhope Utilities has spilled close to 500,000 gallons of raw sewage into our watershed and into Mobile Bay. We are becoming a major polluter of the bay. I would say to you, aren't we better than this? And shouldn't we be better than this? And finally, I would encourage the mayor and the city council to work together in solving this and bringing a sense of urgency to this. Failing to do this will no doubt will result in continued spills like we experienced this past weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Wilson, Council President Burrell, and Councilmen. My name is Casey Gay-Williams. I am actually a resident of Daphne, however, I spend much more time at 327 Fairhope Avenue than I do my own house, and I am representing my Board of Directors and the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce. I have just a brief statement to make. It is the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce's position that the Arts and Crafts Festival is an event that has a tremendous impact on the City of Fairhope, its merchants, and its citizens. Its impact is further and far-reaching throughout the Gulf Coast and the Southeast. The Chamber has been an integral partner since its inception over 60 years ago. The Chamber monetarily underwrote the event for 64 years, along with the city's assistance and volunteers, and it has dedicated itself to the success of this festival for over 60 years. Through a series of events, the Chamber is now in a position where we desire to support the festival in a way that is constructive and collaborative. It is our desire to support the city in any manner that is deemed appropriate. With our history and commitment to the City of Fairhope and to the festival, we stand ready to continue to serve in any way that best benefits all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Baer, owner residence at 114 Echo. Going back to the issue of the sewers, I imagine members of the council and the mayor have been advised by their council that, and have probably seen in the newspaper, that the City of Daphne is now being sued over the wastewater problems they're having. So that is a financial issue that the city needs to bear in mind in considering whether or not to expedite budgeting for the sewers, obviously. Although as an attorney, legal costs have some benefit to the community, I don't think they're really beneficial to the city if they can be avoided by prompt action.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel. I'm Lang Floyd. I'm here on behalf of the Fairhope Arts and Crafts Foundation, just to give a few comments, and then we'll be available for any questions on that agenda item if the council chooses to ask any. First of all, on behalf of the Arts and Crafts Foundation, we would like to say that the foundation is no different than a formalized organization of the longstanding volunteers that have been the foundation, the physical foundation, of the Arts and Crafts Festival. It is the volunteers that have run the foundation, run the festival for years with assistance from the Chamber of Commerce. By creating the foundation, we were able to take some of the proceeds, all the proceeds actually, from the festival and give them back into the city, into the special areas that support the arts, and that is the mission of the foundation. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. It does not make any money. It, well, when I say it doesn't make any money, it certainly makes revenue, and the idea is to create the foundation for an endowment and to put money back into the city. The purpose of this memorandum is to simply put the foundation and the festival in the same standing that the art center has with a multi-year agreement with the city, and also to continue to allow us to work in conjunction with the art center, which we have had roundtable discussions with the art center, with the downtown merchants, and with the Chamber concerning the memorandum of agreement and also concerning the overall future and running of the festival. There is nothing different about the running of the festival. It will be run by the same volunteers, adding a few generations on to it to keep it going, but it's being run by the same volunteers that have run it for many years. I've only been involved with the festival for about 10 years, and I am one of the new people on the festival. There are others that have many, many years' experience there. And with that, I will be around if there's any questions that any council members may have concerning the foundation or the MOU.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Floor is still open for agenda items. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will close public participation. Remember that you will have another opportunity at the end of tonight's meeting. I say at the end, we have an executive session. It will be prior to the executive session, and we won't make you sit around and wait for that to be over. Counsel comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir, thank you. I want to start by thanking our police, our fire, and our city staff for once again safely navigating us through another Mardi Gras season. I know there's a lot of work and a lot of long hours, but we truly do appreciate it. It's a fun event, and we did enjoy it. And then I want to get into something not so pleasant. I hate to do this. I try not to. But it's, I'm going back to something that I've repeated multiple times over the past 18 months or so, and it just bears repeating, that it is absolutely imperative that anybody that purports to put out information on behalf of this city or regarding this city be correct in what you put out to this community. And I'll give you an example, and this piggybacks on something you just mentioned. It's my understanding there was a statement issued today about the sewer, the most recent sewer issue, and then the sewer issues in general, and the ultimate conclusion of that statement was, we're waiting on the council to do something. That's why these sewer spills are occurring, and I can't express enough how patently untrue that is. First and foremost, upgrading the infrastructure for the City of Fairhope, including the sewer system, has been a priority for this council and this mayor since day one, and that is reflected in the fact that we passed, that this council voted to pass a moratorium, and then it voted to have a sewer inspection done, the one that you just cited from. As it pertains to this particular infrastructure issue that led to the overflow on Valley this past weekend, the council voted in September to do line cleaning and improvements in that area, which were done, and we still had a sewer spill. So for anyone to say that these spills are happening because of any action or inaction of this council is disingenuous, in my opinion, and irresponsible. And that leads me to another issue. When we are discussing anything to do with the city, if you read something, and this pertains to a lot of the things that were recently in the media, if you read something that you say, gosh, that seems unreal, it can't be true, it's probably not. And if you have those questions, if you read something that you think, I can't believe they would do that, or I can't believe this is happening, call me. If it's true, I'll tell you. If it's not, I'll tell you. But I just get so upset, the hardest thing about this job is not the upset. The hardest thing about this job is not the criticism. I can take it. We can take it. We signed up for it. But it's to read or hear comments based on bad information, and there is so much of it that goes around. And the last thing I want to comment on is, you know, the memo that the mayor put out that I know a lot of people have seen. And Mayor, I read your comments and your reasoning behind it, and I respectfully disagree. You know, in a situation like we have in the city where the mayor runs the day-to-day operations and including directing employees, but the council ultimately makes decisions on services that the city provides, money that the city needs to spend, and reactions to certain things that are going on in the community, it is absolutely imperative for us to be able to talk to the people on the ground that see those needs and that know exactly how they need to be addressed. Anybody that's ever had a boss knows that there are a lot of things you'll say when they're not in the room versus when they are in the room. And what that memo does is it takes away the council's ability to get the information from the ground level, and that's really where most of it should come from. And so, you know, I have problems with it because it's not going to, it's not a punishment to the council. It's a burden to our employees, and ultimately, it's going to be a burden to the citizens of Fairhope because they're the ones that are going to suffer from this. And I have a problem with it from a transparency standpoint. For an administration, including the council, that has preached, preached transparency since day one, to do anything that impairs the free flow of information that is required to run this city appropriately, I've got a major problem with. And I think, and I think it only hurts the citizens of Fairhope.
I hope you're going to let me respond to this, Council President.
Are you through your comments?
I am. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'll allow you to respond.
Transparency means that many of these conversations that have been happening, and I have many, many examples, are conversations that need to happen in a public forum. So the benefit to all council can get this information. And the communication that is happening regarding day-to-day, this is not inquiring, is happening behind my back. Perfect example is the budget. Every amendment that they did for this budget was included on one agenda item and passed unanimously. I don't think you understand all the amendments that happened on the budget, do you, Jay? I mean, do you understand all the amendments that went into the budget?
Of course I do.
Well, I don't know how because we never had a public meeting about it, and you can't deliberate.
Well, I can read the budget. I can see what was taken out. I met with you on multiple times.
No, no, I'm talking about the final budget that we all received during the work session that the budget was approved that day.
I do understand it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. For your benefit, there was no public meeting for this. Many things were cut that they didn't understand how it affected. The exact same thing happened in 2017 budget. And we're having to do those amendments and put those forth on council agenda items now to get voted on because they were eliminated without any communication with me. I mean, this goes as far as the city attorney. He's doing my job, too. There's only one mayor. I would like to get a lot done, and the state statute absolutely defines that role for mayor and the role for council. Council is not assistant mayor, and they refuse to talk to me and communicate with me. Do you understand how hard that makes my job? It's very, very difficult. And as far as my city employees, they are so happy to be able to not be or feel like they have to be pulled between what you tell them to do and what I tell them to do. And it's also not right. You're putting them in a position where they feel like they have to do these things for you when they work for me. So I can give 100 examples of your interference with day-to-day, and the city attorney doesn't let me know any of the work that he does. He only works with the city council. He is only in communication with city council. I am not included on any of this communication. Can you imagine being the CEO of a business and having a board of directors that are running the day-to-day information every single day? Can you imagine? Okay, that's been my life for over a year, and I'm trying to do my job for you, the citizen, the job that you elected me to do. I just want to be able to do that job.
I would like to just address one of those things real quick. The city employees do not work for the mayor or the council. They work for the citizens of Fairhope. And so I think everything should be done with that in mind and for their benefit and their benefit alone. That's all I've got.
I guess I'll send you the law. They work for the mayor.
Anything else, Councilman Robinson?
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Councilman Conyers?
I've got a couple of things. One, I did want to somewhat piggyback on what Jay brought up because I do also have an issue with the memo. I won't go over the whole thing since Jay covered it pretty well, but I feel like, maybe I took it personally somewhat because I don't feel like I'm directing employees, but I do feel like the employees ought to feel comfortable talking to us. They ought to feel like they have an open line of communication with the council. I agree with what Jay said that there are certain things that people may be willing to say to us if they had a concern with how something's being addressed that they wouldn't say in front of their supervisor, in front of the mayor. I do agree, you're the CEO of the city. As the board of directors, if I were the board of director of a company, I would want all the employees of the company to feel that they had an open line of communication with me. And I think that's for transparency sake.
If it was communication that you were doing, that wouldn't be a problem.
Mayor, please.
If you, well, I do communicate, I have communicated with some of the employees. I mean, I hope I will continue to be able to do so without putting them in, you know, any kind of concern for being terminated. But I don't direct them what to do, but it is good to gather information from employees. So I just wanted to say I do echo what Jay said, and I disagree with your policy on that. Next, I wanted to say that, I mentioned this in the work session, but the library has a calculator that they use to quantitate the value of the services they provide to the citizens. The funding for the library is about 815,000 annually. The library calculator determined that the services for fiscal year 2016 to 2017 was 8.55 million. So they are really doing a lot to serve the citizens of Fairhope. So continue to support the library. Lastly, just wanted to wish Councilman Brown a very happy birthday. I know there's no place he'd rather be than celebrating right here with all of us.
Thanks for coming out.
That's it. That's all I have.
Okay, birthday, boys. Your turn. Councilman Brown?
Thank you. I've got a lot of issues, but the one thing I want to touch back on is what John talked about, was just a master plan. And that's all I'm asking for, is come up with a plan. Where are we going to start? Where are we going to be at the end of year one? And we can figure out the financing moving forward. But we've got to have a plan of what we're doing with improving this infrastructure. And if I could instruct city employees, I'd tell them that's priority number one. That's it.
Councilman Boone?
Well, I would like to thank the employees for such a wonderful job they did on the Arts and Crafts Festival, which I thoroughly enjoyed this year. It was a wonderful time.
Arts and Crafts?
I'm sorry, the Mardi Gras. I'm a little ahead of myself. But I'm sure they'll do just as good a job with the Arts and Crafts. But the Mardi Gras Festival, I thoroughly enjoyed. And if anybody went down the streets the next day, they were all cleaned up. It's all done very well. It's done efficiently. And I just can't say enough of the city employees that we do have. And speaking of that, I might mention that the law states that we can't direct city employees. It doesn't say a thing about we can't talk to the city employees. And I can assure you, I don't work for the mayor, and I will talk to any city employee that I've deemed necessary, and I will never, ever direct them to do anything. So, of course, what everybody else has said, there's no sense reiterating all of that. The next thing I'd like to do is that on February 18th, at the Fairhope First Baptist Church, between 2:00 and 4:00, they're going to have a wonderful documentary film showcasing the many contributions of former Mayor James P. Nix dating back to the '60s through his seven terms as mayor through 1972 and 2000. I would highly recommend to everybody to come and out and enjoy this event at the First Baptist Church of Fairhope. And the other deal I would like to talk about is, I had a conversation with several people today on social media, and it's amazing, the amount of information, wrong information that's out there that people believe because it's the written word on a computer, it's got to be the truth. And I can assure you, anytime you want to know what's going on, or you don't believe, or you just ask a question, just all you got to do is call any one of us. But if you address it on the social media, I will assure you, I will not answer it. But my phone number's available. You can call me anytime. We can talk about anything you'd like to talk about. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Boone. I've got a few things to touch on. I appreciate everyone's comments. I echo Councilman Robinson's sentiments and everybody else's on the memo that was, went out from mayor's office recently, and I also regret that that went out. I think that communication is vital between the council and the employees. I quite often, I very often call employees and ask questions because I have to set an agenda. I want to know if we have a budget for that item. Was it budgeted? Was it not budgeted? Was a study done? And it's just asking questions. We have to make thousands of decisions. I want to know if we have enough information to put something on the agenda. I never keep anything off the agenda that is ready to go on the agenda. I quite often say things, it's premature to put them on the agenda. So I just would ask the mayor to reconsider that policy. You know, it's like they said, just a lot of times people are, we're not, you know, we're not going to get the truth that they have to go through the supervisor or the mayor. And it might be a policeman that says, you know, we really, really, really need more patrolmen. Are we really, I can remember the time where Mayor Kent wanted to buy Chevy Malibu's for the police, and the police are like, please, Councilman Burrell, consider Tahos. That's in no way directing an employee to do anything. That's just gathering information. And I remember they gave us a stack of paper, gave the council a stack of papers. Do you remember that, Councilman Boone? Yes, I do. Supporting, you know, the idea that they wanted Tahos. Well, they didn't want to go to the mayor and tell them how emphatically they believed that they should be given Tahos. They wanted to come to the council, who by the way, controls the spending of the money. And we were the decision makers, and we are the decision makers on money. So there are just thousands of opportunities to talk to various employees about the expenditures of funds. And I assure you, despite what you read, there's no directing of city employees on a day-to-day basis. I even get, I get tons and tons of phone calls from employees asking for clarification, and I'm extremely careful. Sometimes I even feel like I'm being set up to direct them. I really feel like I'm being set up to direct employees, and I'm very careful. And I say, well, my suggestion would be to do this, or my suggestion would be to do that. But that's just my suggestion. And I will give you an example. The Friday before the MMOR parade, the council, well, not the Friday before, I'm getting ahead of myself, the council passed a resolution determining which streets would be closed for the MMOR parade. The mayor pretty much has that discretion to do what's best for the city unless council takes action and says specifically, close these streets or open these streets. I got a call from an employee that said, you know, you guys said close it two hours before and open it up two hours after, but that puts us into K-o-e-r and yada, yada, yada. And oh, by the way, the merchants want to close the streets. They want to close Fairhope Avenue between Section and Church Street. And I said, well, we did pass a resolution saying when the streets are to be closed. So, you know, I, as a council member, am not going to say anything about it if the merchants on Fairhope Avenue all are in favor of closing that section of the street because what we're really trying to do are make the downtown merchants happy. And whatever it is that they want to do, that's what we want to do. That was why we passed the resolution to begin with. So they asked, and I said, well, I would be the one that would raise Cain about not following the resolution. And if, nobody's going to complain about it. There's really no harm, no foul. So they closed that street. But they also said, the mayor wants to close DeLamar. What do you think about that? And I said, well, the mayor has a right to ask.
I hope you let me respond to this.
I'm defending you here, too. I said, the mayor has a right to ask that question because she's a merchant like everybody else and has a right to ask that question. But I would poll the people on there, not directing. I said, my suggestion, poll the people on the street, find out what they want to do. If you can get a consensus, I'm not going to say anything about it if you do it. So that was the answer. That's getting calls from supervisors and employees for interpretation. Now, I will say that the resolution was not followed. The, you could not get down Section Street after the MMOR parade, which was in violation of the resolution. And Mayor, your responsibility is to carry out the resolve of the council. That was not done. Now, let's talk about no communication for a minute. You said you weren't consulted on the raises, and I think we came up with just an outstanding compromise in that every city employee will get some sort of raise. And some of them will get merit raises, and I think that was the intention. But this assures that people whose jobs are very hard to grade, you know, if they're out planting flowers, you're going to choose one flower planter over the other? They planted the tulips better than the other guy or the other lady did? So this ensures everybody gets a raise. But you complained that there was no communications. Well, people, let me tell you about some communications that we don't get. I've received phone calls from realtors saying that the Civic Center is for sale. This building is for sale. Folks, the council is responsible for all the real property of the city of Fairhope. There is no communication with the council. This came out from the mayor's office, I believe, that we're going to sell it, and we're going to move our offices to the K-1 Center. We're going to move the city's offices to the K-1 Center. And then I got the word that we were going to also build our offices on top of a parking deck that was going to be built on this location. Once again, no communication with the city council. And then I was told we were going to trade the land, the Triangle Property for Coastal Alabama, and these came from conversations with the mayor. We were going to make a land swap. No communication, no polling of the council. These aren't trivial things. These are massive undertakings that the council's never been involved in. How about this one? How about the proposal to put a market at the Rose Garden and put a hotel next to the Fairhope Pier? Have y'all seen those drawings?
These are all lies.
Lies?
You're not going to let me talk, so that's why I go to social media.
Lies?
They're absolute outright lies.
Okay, you don't, you have not seen drawings that have a hotel next to the Fairhope Pier.
Those were ideas, and I said, there's no way we would ever do that. These were ideas that were flowing in a brainstorming effort. What you're doing right now is you, you're the ones that's spreading lies.
You know, Mayor, you know, you're not doing my talk.
This is, this is why I will do my update on social media.
Sure.
Because I cannot talk during council meetings.
I gave you an opportunity to address, and I gave you an opportunity to address it there, although you were interrupting my comments. So you didn't tell people that we were going to sell the Civic Center.
Absolutely not.
I can provide the name of the commercial realtors that called me and a very outstanding person and said that, he wanted to know when we were selling the Civic Center. Matt White, with Whitespun Realty, called me. You call him a liar now.
I will be happy to have a meeting. These are all lies, absolute lies. Discussing ideas is not a decision. I can't make that decision.
I'm still talking, Mayor. Please let me have the floor. It's still council comments. I'm in Montgomery, and I have a person there with South Alabama in front of the mayor when he said, we need to talk about the K-1 Center, which we're going to talk about later tonight. He said, I thought y'all were going to tear that down. Where'd that come from?
Baldwin County Board of Education.
So the way I see it, these ideas have all been floated out there by you. The parking garage idea with the offices on top, you said to Fairhope Single Tax Colony.
That is absolutely not true. I mean, I have these conversations. I know what I said. I even put them out. I even met with you on them, and I've met with other council about all of our properties. They're conversations. I have no control over that. All I have is ideas and prioritizing our assets and looking at other needs that the city has. Trying to, using council meetings to talk about these lies and then not giving me an opportunity to do it, I mean, this is childish. When I post something on social media, it is absolutely true. The holdback from all infrastructure right now, I have a year's list of why it's been blocked. And if citizens want that, I will put it together. I will put the emails out. I will show every single documentation where we have put it in front of council and implored you to make a decision. I will do that. I will do that. Because it is an absolute fact that the infrastructure we are waiting on right now is because council needs to make a decision.
My last point I was going to make was on the Restore Act tonight. Our Director of Operations discussed the infrastructure needs and the funding for that. And then on the, in the grant opportunities was $10 million from Restore Act funds. The council has not been involved in what's been presented to the Restore Act council. And I'll just ask the council, have you been involved in any conversations with what's being presented to the Restore Act council? Have you, Councilman Conyers, ever been notified of what's going to the?
I've talked to every single one of you about it.
Ever been notified of what we're presenting to the Restore Act council?
I thought I was aware.
Councilman Boone, you?
My god.
I haven't either. I guess we're all five liars. So, you know, you're going up there requesting, you know, $10 million, yet the people that have to decide what to do with the money have never been, you heard it.
I have started communicating this as soon as we got the sewer report back, and I've talked to every single one of you. This is not a guarantee.
This started with your comment.
This is money we wouldn't have to pay if we were to get it.
Yeah. Hey, Jack, let's move on.
Well, I'm on my, I'm trying to get through my comments still.
I mean, this is unbelievable.
Well, it started with your comment that there's been no communication with you about these raises. We stopped it, we stopped that portion of the budget when the Finance Director came up, and rightfully so, pointed out that, that your intention was not to put 2% in there and give a 2% across-the-board raise. That was what we interpreted it. So we repealed that portion of the budget at your urging, and we came up with something that allows everybody to get a raise and to get merit increases. So, anyway.
All I'm saying is that part wasn't discussed with me. That's all.
Mayor, I mean, I'm not trying to bait with you about the budget right now, I'm only trying to point out that, you know, we, we did listen to you. We did listen to you. We have merit raises in there now. We stopped what we had done because we had passed what we thought was your intent. We backed up, and now we're passing something that really should make everyone happy if , well, it's proposed tonight. So with that, I'll close council comments. We'll move on to Item 6 on the agenda, which is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1510 and ordinance number 1573, known as the Personnel Rules, Policies and Procedures, Section 11.01, selection of members for the Personnel Board. And I believe, Councilman Boone, you want to summarize that change? It should be highlighted.
Yeah, basically, we're looking to change the number of participants, but we did move it to six. We're trying to reduce it back down to five, so basically we could have a, when it comes to a vote, you can have a majority vote on it. And it was talked about in a Personnel Board meeting, and it was suggested we bring this up to the council.
And does the Personnel Board agree with this recommendation?
Yes, they do.
Okay. I'll entertain, well, somebody needs to introduce this ordinance.
I'd like to introduce it.
Okay, ordinance has been introduced. This will lay over to the next council meeting unless somebody wants to make a motion for immediate consideration.
I would like to make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for immediate consideration. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of voting for immediate consideration? Clerk, you're going to call that Rome?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
No.
Okay, that fails. Okay, this will lay over to the next meeting now. Item number seven is a resolution that the budget for FY 2017 to 2018 is hereby amended by approving a 2% increase for employees' pay by putting the 2% of the entire pay budget in a pool to be dispersed as follows. Full-time salaried employees will receive a 1% pay raise, and 1% will go into a pool for merit increases that cannot exceed 6% per individual. These increases will not be applicable to those receiving promotional merit raises already approved in the budget and cannot exceed the pay range for any job description, or job position. Part two is, full-time hourly employees will receive a 1.5% pay increase. A half percent will go into a pool for merit increases that cannot exceed 6% per individual. These increases will not be applicable to those receiving promotional merit raises already approved in the budget and cannot exceed the pay range for any job positions. Any questions, council? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item eight is a resolution that the city council hereby approves and authorizes the City of Fairhope to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Fairhope Arts and Crafts Festival Foundation and the City of Fairhope. Entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I guess, I just wanted to say that I think this is a great compromise that y'all came up with. I, I know the merit system works very well in the private sector. I'm a little hesitant about how it would work solely a merit system in the public sector. I think this is a good in-between. It, it just gives everybody a raise and it gives an opportunity to further reward those that are deemed deserving of that. So I think it's a good compromise.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item eight is a resolution that the city council hereby approves and authorizes the City of Fairhope to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Fairhope Arts and Crafts Festival Foundation and the City of Fairhope. Entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'll, I'll start, I think, probably because I'm, I was sort of near the beginning of this. You know, mayor, I, I've heard from you that there had not been involvement of, of the multiple outlets that participate in this. I've always been under, I've always been under the understanding that, that they were. I know that the merchants were, I know that the merchants were consulted. It's my understanding that this doesn't alter anything that the Arts Center does or will do for this festival. I mean, I, I am, as a member of the, as a representative of the city, I have at least had this discussed with me, and I believe several of the other councilmen may, may have met at some point as well. You know, I have the utmost respect for the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce. I, I am grateful for everything they do that furthers the City of Fairhope. But it's my understanding that we didn't even get to this point until there was no longer a relationship that was agreeable between the foundation and the chamber. It didn't come to us until they ultimately didn't have an agreement any longer. So at some point, somebody's got to move forward the ball, and it was, you know, my understanding is, I think the foundation would be happy with a 20-year commitment. But, but three years in order to set it up so that every year, you're not fighting over who gets the street and where does it go, you need some continuity to secure sponsors, to, to, to have, have an outpost for people to contact where they know who's involved and what's going on. And it's not my intent to take anything away from the chamber. This is how it was brought to us, and that relationship was over.
Did you talk to the chamber?
I personally did not, no.
Okay. So why make a decision tonight? Arts and Crafts, has it been happening yet this year? What is the sense of urgency?
Well, well, I mean, if, if there is a resolution to be made, but, but if there is, if, if the chamber and the foundation have become at odds in the fact that there is no agreement to be made between them, I don't know that.
That's not the case. That's not the case.
Judge Floyd, can you address that?
Is anybody from the chamber here?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams is here.
Okay.
She and I have had numerous conversations. We met with the past, I don't know if they're called the president or the chair of the, of the chamber. We initially had a three-year deal that we were going to work back when Richard Johnson was chairman of the chamber. The chamber executive director changed, we continued it for one year, we were going to continue with more. We met throughout the year, we made recommendations, the chamber made recommendations. None of us could agree on the ultimate recommendations that were made. We are a member of the chamber, the foundation is a member of the chamber, we ask, we, we welcome the chamber's support of what we're doing. The only difference in this resolution is that it's, you know, that it automatically rolls over the next year without us coming back, doing the same thing again.
The, the permission that y'all asked last time did not involve the chamber. The chamber has not been engaged. Believe me, I have been talking with them, and I know the history of Arts and Crafts Festival.
This is council discussion, council discussion section. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Council discussion now, please.
Unbelievable.
I have to respectfully disagree with the mayor. The council, the chamber has been, they were at a own roundtable discussion with the Arts Center, the downtown merchants, the foundation board, or representatives, and the chamber had a representative there, and the representative said the chamber is not going to be involved this year. I, I, I don't know how it's, where to understand that other than what was said.
Would it be worth putting on a work session with all of the stakeholders? That's all. What, why can't that happen? What is the sense of urgency that not all stakeholders can come to the table and voice their opinion?
I would just like that, I mean, Casey, I don't want to put you on the spot, I really truly don't, but I mean, we're hearing two different stories. One is that you haven't been consulted at all, and the other is that you were in on the discussions. I think that's the only, the best way to get it is straight from the horse's mouth. Were you involved? Has this been discussed with you?
We have had numerous discussions, and this is not the place I wanted to be today.
Sure.
Which is why I made the public statement.
Right.
I became president of the chamber December of 2016. By the time I became president, there was a less-than-stellar relationship between the committee, the foundation. I did what I could to repair it. I can't go back in history. I would like to think, had I been in the position of those who made those decisions, I would have made decisions differently. I apologized for those who had gone before, who I would have thought, would have made a different decision. And I understood why the committee and the foundation, why the committee formed a foundation, and I understood why. All I could do was move forward, and that was the statement I made repeatedly. We had a 50-50 partnership that was entered into prior to my being president. I thought we had worked well together. There was very, it was a memorandum of understanding between the foundation and the chamber. It was the first year that a memorandum of that type had been entered into. I was not a part of that. It had different delineations of who was going to do what, how it was going to be done, some things were blurry. I made the statement that I was going to do whatever needed to be done to make the festival successful. It doesn't just impact one group of people. I did what I knew to do to try to mend the fence that had been irreparably damaged. It was our understanding at the end of the first year that we would renegotiate the memorandum of understanding once we had a better understanding of what that looked like. I supported their request of the streets. I was here at that council meeting because I had said, you know, we worked well together, we had the continuity, we had 24 hours, you know, we had staffing, we had the history. I remember when it was in the storefronts. My dad was the Chamber of Commerce president then. I've been a part of Arts and Crafts my whole life, not just the committee. So when we met to talk about the memorandum of understanding, we were told we really didn't bring any value, and to bring a proposal. And we did, which was very much like the proposal we had done the year before with some of the things that we did, like provide the insurance for the festival, the liability insurance, which was, had been a significant cost. We made a proposal, it was not agreed upon, we did go back and forth several times. The final proposal asked us to agree to something for five years with some stipulations. We determined at that time, it was not worth additional conflict for the City of Fairhope. It was not worth going to battle over something that, that in the scheme of things, did not need to be another upset. And we bowed out. We said, you know, if that's what it's going to take for us to work together, it's not working together. It was us completely exiting the festival. There was monetary benefit to the chamber to do so. However, I do not and do not feel comfortable obligating future boards, which have nothing to do with the situation at hand, for five years. I also was not comfortable with the stipulations. Therefore, we decided it was in the best interest of the city and the festival to let the foundation move forward for this year. It was our hope through the roundtable meetings and discussions that we would eventually be able to be a stakeholder in the festival and support it fully. We had one roundtable meeting, they've had one marketing meeting. We're supporting the festival. But we exited the battlefield and said, this is what's best for the city, and this is what's best, and this is what the chamber needs to do. The city and the festival comes before the chamber. I don't like to be painted in a light that makes me look like I didn't care about the festival and that we said we weren't having anything to do with it. That is not accurate. These are my friends that sit here on the foundation. I have done nothing myself personally but try to support their efforts and the festival. I am not going to do anything other than what the city requests us to do. It is the city's festival, it is the citizens' festival. I am not going to cause any further upset for the City of Fairhope, and as my public statement said, I am willing to serve at your direction.
Casey, I, I'd just like to thank you for everything you said. I think it, it makes a lot of sense, and it truly shows, I guess, the bind that you've been put in, and I appreciate your, the way you handled it. And also, Jack, I apologize, I'm, I'm directing and waving people up here like I'm running the show, and I, I do apologize for that, but I thought there was some information that needed to get out, and I thought that was the best way to do it, so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, we're still in council. Well, I think it's all pertinent, Councilman Robinson. We're still in council comments. Is anyone else? I have a few comments, but I can.
I've got a few comments. I just want to say, you know, being where we're located in downtown, we're, we're fairly involved in chamber and Arts and Crafts, so I feel like we've kind of got one foot in, in each camp. I was disappointed to see the split, you know, it was easier for us to, to work as one combination, but I also understand that, that there were reasons for it, and both sides tried to work something out, and I guess they haven't been able to, to do so. Casey, you're doing an awesome job as chamber president, keep it up. I, I feel like, you know, I thought about, well, maybe a one-year agreement would be in the best interest to give everyone a year to reprieve, but the more I thought about that, yes, so much energy and effort has been expended this last few months trying to work out a solution. I just almost wonder if it wouldn't be best for everybody involved, chamber and the Arts and Crafts, go ahead and do a three-year deal. At the end of three years, we'll know whether or not the Arts and Crafts Foundation can handle this festival completely on their own, or whether or not they need to come back in with the chamber. I just would ask the citizens to support both organizations. They both do a lot. I mean, Arts and Crafts is a huge event for Fairhope, huge event for the downtown merchants. The chamber is out there promoting our, our area 365 days a year, so support them, too. I just, we are where we are right now, I think maybe the three years is the best, the best solution at, at the time, but I guess that's all I've got to say.
Mayor, I'm going to get back to you in a minute. Any other council comments? I'd like to say that I have met with, with both parties on several occasions, and I, too, had even talked to each party and had, had urged each party to, to work out this in, in total fairness to both sides. I mean, I see Judge Floyd shaking his head. I, I mean, I urged him to include the chamber, urged the chamber to, you know, work with them, and I, and I believe that they, they tried. I had hoped that it would be worked out, but I guess they couldn't get everything worked out. And I feel like, I, I do feel an extreme sense of urgency in that the Arts and Crafts Festival is a month from now. So I don't think that we can put this off any longer. Something has to be decided. Festival this year now. As far as three years, I thought about that. I thought about everything from the naming rights and I asked questions. We're not prevented from talking to the Arts and Crafts Committee. And so we, you know, we talked about naming, we talked about money, we talked about, you know, the terms. And so I've heard two or three people now mention the term three years. There is nothing that prevents the Arts and Crafts Committee and the Chamber from getting together, you know, throughout the next year or the next year if they choose to and then the Arts and Crafts Committee come into the city and say, you know, we want to mutually rewrite the memorandum of understanding, which may include the Chamber. So I think that it's right, as you do, Councilman Conyers, to, to work on three, a three-year MOU. But I also think that if they were to decide that, you know, they've got something worked out, they can come to the city and we can, we can go back. It doesn't stop that from happening.
It's in the MOU.
It's in the MOU. I'm saying, Mayor, I'll give you the last word.
Okay. This is not for this year. This memorandum is for the next three years. They already have.
This year. That's right.
This year taken care of.
Right.
And this year hasn't even happened yet, okay? When I, when I meant, I'm not trying to make anybody the bad guy. I'm trying to say it's about inclusion. It's about a lot of organizations that work together to make this a success. I don't understand why there has to be one organization exclusively involved in this. Yes, we appreciate volunteers. I've been a volunteer all my life and I've had a foundation, but I've never expected anything in return. I mean, I appreciate the volunteers and the volunteers are valuable and make this successful, but this organization is very new and Casey is a brand-new director, an exceptional director, one that has spoken to me as a businessperson. It's the most refreshing thing ever because I can assure you, that's had some history too. We have a brand-new director with the Chamber. We have a brand-new director with the Eastern Shore Art Association. For the first time this year, we are all working together instead of individual silos. I mean, it's a beautiful thing. Why all of a sudden, out of nowhere, is there a memorandum of agreement that there hasn't even been any discussion this year about working together? It's, it really could be, we need to talk about it more. It's too much.
This MOU is for this year, next year, and the next year.
They already have all the money for this year.
We're considering.
I'm going to allow you to speak. We're going to, we're going to bring it to, we're going to call the question here in about 30 seconds.
We're considering this big, the upcoming festival being the first of the three years. We're not saying three additional ones.
What I'm saying is y'all created the website, started taking all the applications, which was the Chamber's job before, you know, that, that just happened and we're like, okay, now it's suddenly the Foundation's event, so you already have all the money for this year.
We'll be happy to sit down at an appropriate time and, and explain how the festival runs to anybody that would like to know.
It really needs to be everybody.
We're going to call the question now. Counsel, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Item nine is a resolution, that resolution number 2765-18 is hereby rescinded, rescinded relating to the procurement of electrical repairs at the Marina after Hurricane Nate by the request of the Electric Department due to the system would need more extensive upgrades to meet the current code. I'll entertain a motion, passes resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of rescinding, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Item 10 is a resolution to award bid for repairs to Quail Creek Clubhouse for the Golf Department to Platte Builders Incorporated with a total cost not to exceed $303,175 for option two. Entertain a motion to award this bid.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Discussion? Councilman Brown, you've been all over this. Do you concur with this? I guess you do, you've seconded the motion, right?
Right, yeah, I sat down with Platte Builders and Richard and Lance and went through the proposals they had for value engineering and I think came up with the best plan for the clubhouse moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor to award the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Item 11, and there's one little typo in there, this says for the gas department, that should say Public Works Department. So item 11 is a resolution to award a bid for reinforced concrete pipe class three for the Public Works Department to Alabama Pipe and Supply Company with a total proposed based on linear foot for various sizes and purchased on an as-needed basis. And see the bid tabulations under the tab in your book, counsel, and all of that and the actual resolution should say Public Works instead of Gas. Do I hear a motion to award this bid?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to award the bid for reinforced concrete pipe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Item 12 is a resolution of the City of Fairhope vote to procure services to paint the exterior of the James P. Nick Center with a total cost of $12,820.48. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to procure the paint services. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 13 is a resolution to procure a new Freightliner 114 SD chassis with a new A Sidewinder XTR, 22-yard automated side loader through a three-year lease to own for the Sanitation Department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance contract. Therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. The three-year lease to own for a total buy in the amount of $235,000 including freight to be leased through Bancor, South Equipment Finance, or another local bank. Entertain a motion for this lease?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of purchasing this or procuring this new Freightliner, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 14 is a resolution to procure a new Freightliner M2 chassis with Peterson Lightning loader trash body through a three-year lease to own for the Sanitation Department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers, Powers Alliance contract. Therefore, this does not have to be let out for bid. The three-year lease to own contract for a total buy in the amount of $163,000 including freight to be leased through Bancor, South Equipment Finance, or another local bank. Counsel, I will just say that all these were, these purchases or leases were budgeted. All right. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor to procure the Freightliner M2, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 15 is a resolution to procure a new Elgin Whirlpool Street Sweeper on a 2018 Peterbilt chassis through a three-year lease to own. Option for the Street Department and the equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance contract and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The three-year lease to own for a total buy in the amount of $106,332.75 including freight to be leased through Bancor, South Equipment Finance, or another local bank. Entertain a motion to procure this equipment?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to procure the Street Sweeper. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Wait, I'm sorry, I just, I got a question and I just saw pop up on the others, it says projected budget. It's got the amount times three, which equals the total on this one. If you look at the tab, the amount is, or the budget was 106.5 times three, but we're in a, the total is 106, right?
No. I believe so. Look at the memo there. It's a $300,000 piece of.
Okay, okay.
So it was correct on the green sheet, the 106.5, three years.
Just not right on the agenda, got it.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry about that.
Did we already vote?
Yeah.
Did you vote, Jimmy?
I didn't vote because I was.
You want to vote on that?
Sure, yay.
Okay. That covered.
That covered.
Okay. All right, item 16 is a resolution of City of Fairhope vote to purchase two water well tanks, pumps, fittings, and houses, one for fluoride and one for zinc orthophosphate for the Water Department with a total cost of $9,300. Entertain a motion, passes resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item 17 is a resolution of City of Fairhope vote to procure a van-mounted IBAK CCTV pipe inspection equipment with Pipe Logix GIS software system for the Sewer Department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $195,781.65. Now, this is a budgeted amount, in fact, about $54,000 under budget to be, to be exact.
We've got tons to spend that on too. Bring us a plan.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
I will say, this is going a long way from where we used to have a handheld camera we slid down the pipe by hand to this mechanism. It's going a long way from there. We've needed this sorely.
That was back when you could fit in a pipe, wasn't it? Item 18 is a resolution of City of Fairhope vote to procure three John Deere 7700A Precision Cut Fairway mowers for the Recreation Department. This equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $164,536.89 and that is four-three and these do not imply that they are used only on fairways. These are what they use for cutting grass in numerous places throughout the city. I'll entertain a motion to approve this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 19 is a resolution of City of Fairhope vote to purchase an asphalt recycler and hotbox trailer for the Street Department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $61,271. Entertain a motion to approve this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. This is budgeted as well, about $3,700 below budget. I told them they're getting better at budgeting, they're always a little high and make everything look like a good buy. Okay, we have a motion and a second, right, clerk?
Yes.
Okay, all is in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 20 is a resolution of City of Fairhope approves the procurement of a firewall security system for city departments, primarily for the Police Department and is exempt from formal bid pursuant to a Code of Alabama 1975. Total cost is $15,484. Entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Notice this is not, it says expense, it's not budgeted. Can we get an explanation on that? Is there anyone here to give us an explanation on that? From the Police Department? No?
He's Jeff.
Yeah, it's Jeff here.
Hey, Chief, hey, Jeff.
Just noticed that it's not budgeted.
I placed it in the budget. I don't know where the not budgeted portion came from.
Okay, maybe, maybe that's a typo on the green sheet?
If, if it's in the budget, then yeah, that's a typo.
Okay. Well, it does have the signatures.
Oh.
Okay, very well. We have a motion and a second?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Chief. Okay. All right, hearing no further questions or discussion, all is in favor of the procurement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 21 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Stewart Engineering to provide professional engineering services to upgrade Fairhope Electrical Substations and Distribution Circuits with a cost not to exceed amount of $636,812.50. I'll entertain a motion to approve this professional services?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. Is this just for engineering services only or is this for work, engineering and work?
Believe I can answer that. I believe it's only for the engineering, which if you look at the total estimated cost of the upgrades, really is actually less than 10% of what's being proposed. Not, not a bad price at all.
Okay.
Is that, did I get that right, Richard?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And that is for all of the substation upgrades, right, Mr. Peterson? Is that right? Mr. Peterson, that is for all the electrical system upgrades?
It's all project.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 22 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number one of the lift station odor control chemical for the Sewer Department with BioMagic Incorporated for an additional one year as per the terms and conditions of the original contract. The cost is $6 per meter gallon for an annual estimated cost of $224,475 based on the amount used in FY 2017. Entertain a motion to approve this purchase or execute the contract, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, counsel. Motion carries. Item 23 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number one of bid for sludge removal services for the wastewater treatment plant with Green South Solutions for an additional one years per the terms and conditions of the original contract. The cost is $85 per cubic yard for an annual estimated cost of $505,000 based on FY 2017. Entertain a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the contract for an additional year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 24 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number one for the bid for tree trimming services for the Electric Department with Burford's Tree Incorporated for an additional one year. As per the terms and conditions of the original contract, the cost is $173.28 on unit hourly billing for an annual estimated cost of $269,443 based on FY 2017. Entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 25 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute the second final extension of the contract with Delta Industries, doing business as Gulf State's Ready Mix for the annual bid of ready mixed concrete for unit prices for the city for an estimated amount of $46,000 per year for an additional one year as per the terms and conditions of the original contract. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the extension of this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 26 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute the second final extension of the contract with Riverbin Enterprises doing business as East Bay Engraving. For the contract, unit price is quoted for an estimated amount of $45,000 per year for per year for employee uniforms for an additional one years per the terms and conditions of the original contract. Entertain a motion to-
So moved.
Extend this for a year?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of extending the contract for one more year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item twenty-seven was pulled from the agenda at the beginning of tonight's meeting. Item twenty-eight is a resolution approval of the new membership fees for the Rec Center and the Fairhope Municipal Pool. Can we have someone give us a presentation of this? Is there someone? Tom, can you do that? Do you have it all? Or Sherri Lee?
So I don't have the final numbers. I don't think that you have. I'm not sure if I have the same thing. And unfortunately, Nate is not here to speak to it because he was really involved in giving us the input to updating the numbers for the revenue for the pool and the rec center. And Tom is now, he has come in midstream, and so he wasn't involved in that, in that discussion either. Lynn was involved to some degree, but I don't think you have the final numbers either, do you? I'm not sure. Y'all have the final numbers.
We don't have the, the numbers that exist right now.
You should have-
I think if you scroll back at-
You should have a spreadsheet.
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, it's in there.
Oh, that's, that's-
Yeah. So I did give something to Lisa that has, okay, you have it?
Okay, that is in here.
Okay, a comparison of last year, the recommended, and then the difference. So you could see that. But there's a little bit of a change of the guards in the middle of this process, so.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I will say a lot of work went into coming up with the figures. We looked at the YMCA. We got recommendations from, we called every surrounding municipality that had rec centers or pools and looked at, you know, the closest to what we have in comparison. So there was an extensive bit of research done, but that was done for the budget of year before last. So it's been a while since that happened, but it factored into what was presented in the final, in this year's budget.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? I'll entertain a motion to approve the rates submitted, the fees submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, Tom. Okay, item twenty-nine is a resolution the City Council hereby authorizes Jack Burrell, whoever that is, on behalf of the City Council to negotiate the purchase price for the K-one property and building with the Baldwin County Board of Education. I'll entertain a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay. I feel like everybody would be disappointed if we didn't. There's so many people out here that are in the audience for it. No, I mean, I'm absolutely in favor of this. You know, it's been my position, I think, from day one about this property that if we can get it, I am, I'd be ecstatic for the City of Fairhope, and if we can use it in a way that continues to facilitate education on that space, I think that's, that's a bonus, and it's absolutely something I hope to see happen, and I'd be happy to help in any way that I can.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I'm absolutely in favor of purchasing it, too. The one question I would have, I know there's some conversations, C-SO-SE is sitting out there, about if the city purchases this property, the funds should flow back into our feeder pattern for, for use, correct?
That's part of the negotiation.
Okay.
That is, that is my understanding.
Okay. All right.
Well, counsel, I'm, I'm just, I'm not going to vote on this, but I am going to say that whatever is negotiated would be brought back to the council for approval. So you would know what those terms were before you, you had to agree to any kind of purchase price, no matter how small of a purchase price that is. Okay, counsel, we have a motion and a second. Barring any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Item thirty is an appointment to the personnel board. The nominee for the five-year term is Mr. Ron Hayes. I do, I'm of the understanding that the personnel board has met with Mr. Hayes and has recommended his approval of this. Is that correct, Mr. Moon?
That is correct.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for the appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the appointment of Mr. Ron Hayes to the personnel board? Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, appointment is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item thirty-one is an application for a beer wine off-premise alcoholic beverage license for Walgreen Company, Rite Aid store number oh-seven-one-zero-four located at one-oh-one South Green Road, Fairhope, Alabama. Chief Pettis, do you know of any reason to deny this application?
Oh, no, sir. Everything is in Florida. Basically, what this is, is Wal, Walgreen has bought out Rite Aid, which Rite Aid already has an application. So it's just some house cleaning, basically, business that's going on. It hired a lawyer to get all of the stores in compliance and stuff, and it, it's their first step with alcohol.
Any questions for the chief, counsel?
No, but I do feel like every time somebody says, utters the phrase, "They hired a lawyer," they say it with a little bit of disdain, and I do take offense to that.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving this application, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, and application's approved. Item thirty-two is written there, is that resolution that you have in front of you that we added at the beginning of the meeting? It's the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a fifty-gallon-per-minute A-Plex mud pump for the Vermeer twenty-four-by-forty directional drill for the electric department from Vermeer Southeast Sales and Services as sole source distributor in Alabama and authorizes procurement based on the optional allow by the Code of Alabama. Contractual services and purchases of commodities for which there's only one vendor or supplier in contractual services and purchases of personal property, which by their very nature are impossible to award by competitive bidding. The cost will be twelve-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. This is not a budgeted item, but this is something that absolutely has to be replaced due to some damages that were sustained by this piece of equipment. So I'll entertain a motion to approve this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
Mayor, counsel, I'm Eric Cortinas. I'm president of the Fairhope Pirate Booster Club, and I want to remind everybody, drawdown is Saturday, day after tomorrow. Everything is good, everything's ready to go. We've spent this whole week organizing. So the doors open at six, we start serving food at seven, and we start drawing tickets at seven-thirty. You can, if you haven't already gotten your ticket, you can buy them at the door. It's a hundred dollars per couple. That's your food, your drinks, your entry into the drawdown itself and the silent auction. We, I think they're up to almost three-hundred items that have been donated. So we ask everybody to please come. We would certainly appreciate your support, as would all of the student athletes at Fairhope Middle and Fairhope High School.
Thank you, Mr. Cortinas.
I'm not here to negotiate. Mayor, counsel, I'm Cecil Christianberry, two-twelve, Jeff Davis, written. I want to take this public opportunity to thank this city for what you do and for FIF, the Fairhope Education and Richmond Foundation, for what you do to support our young people in District Six, the Fairhope feeder pattern. It's just over the top. We're the bell cow for Baldwin County, and I, as a representative of our five schools, I want to, I want to thank you.